Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at four forty P M. In council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Perkin Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin and Isanape, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by Council Dollar Dykens, seconded by Conservative Owen, be resolved of the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, be approved as circulated.
All in favor? Opposed, then noted, item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest.
I do.
Councilor Ranger.
I, Janice Ranger, am declaring a direct deemed or indirect pecuniary interest on the agenda of the meeting data, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, an open meeting. Agenda item number six point eight, agenda titled Community Grants Program Request for Funding Rotary Club of Perkin Lake. It is indirect. I am a shareholder. I have a control, or sorry, under the, I am direct, indirect, I am a shareholder, director, or officer of a private corporation affected. I have a controlling interest in a public corporation affected. I'm a member of a body. I am a partner or employee of a person or a body with a pecuniary interest. The nature of my interests is as follows. I am a member of the Rotary Club of Perkin Lake.
Thank you, you're welcome. Anything further? Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, Sarah. I, Lad Shaba, I'm declaring indirect pecuniary interest on the agenda of the meeting data, Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Open meeting, item, agenda item six point two. Agenda title Site Plan Control Agreement Application, sixty Goodfish Road. It is indirect. I'm a shareholder, director, or officer of the private corporation affected. I have a controlling interest in a public corporation affected. I'm a member of the body, I'm a partner or employee of the person or body with pecuniary interest. The nature of my interests is as follows. My engineering firm may be involved in the jurisdiction of this site. So signed by me.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Owens?
Just for clarity, I do not have a pecuniary interest at six point four after consultation with the Ontario Commission.
Thank you. Item number four, petitions and delegations, there are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations, five point one, council minutes.
Approved by Council Patrick, I'm seconded by Council Janice Ranger, be resolved and council approved the next of the following meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of council held June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number five point two, committee of council minutes.
Moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Dollar Dykens, be resolved at council, minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Perkin Lake Planning Advisory Committee held July twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. And minutes of the Tech Pioneer Residence Committee of Management held April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number six, reports municipal officers and communications, six point one. Deeming bylaw application for lots two fifty-one and two fifty-two of registered plan M dash nine eighty T Brooklyn Rose on Acting Planning Administrator. Thank you for joining us.
To you, Madam Mayor of council. The owner of eighty-five and eighty-seven Government Road West has requested deeming bylaw to merge their lots in order to obtain a deck permit as the deck would encroach over the lot line. The existing, it appears that the existing deck that they're wishing to replace already encroaches. So merging of the lots is necessary to not only rectify that existing encumbrance, but in order to permit any building permits to be issued. The lot at eighty-five Government Road West is three hundred and twenty point six five square meters with a frontage of ten point fifty-four meters. Eighty-seven Government Road West has an area of three hundred and thirty-seven point eleven square meters and a frontage of ten point six seven meters. Both lots are located in the town center commercial zone and are considered undersized as per the zoning bylaw regulations. There is a retail building with residential units on eighty-five Government Road West and eighty-seven Government Road West is a vacant lot. Should the lots be deemed, the property will have a frontage of twenty-one point two meters and an area of six hundred and fifty-seven point seven five square meters. This would bring the lot area and frontage into compliance with the zoning bylaw. Under the Planning Act, lots of a planned subdivision that has been registered for eight or more years may be deemed as not registered on the planned subdivision in order for them to merge on title. Since the plan M ninety-eight was registered in nineteen twenty-seven, it is well past the required eight years. A fee of eight hundred and thirty-five dollars was collected, a portion of which goes to recover legal costs with registering the deeming bylaw on title. We've had this agreement.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None noted, all at the reading.
Moved by Council Lad Shaba, seconded by Council Patrick Kylie, be resolved at report number twenty-four, D E B fourteen. And titled deeming bylaw application for lots two fifty-one and two fifty-two of registered plan M nine eighty be received. And that council enacted deeming bylaw pursuant to section fifty-four of Planning Act so as to deem lots two fifty-one and two fifty-two registered plan M nine eighty as not being registered lots within a planned subdivision. And finally, the council authorized the deeming bylaw be given three readings on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item, thank you, then. Item six point two, Site Plan Control Agreement Application, sixty Goodfish Road, working, you may continue.
To you, Madam Mayor of council, the owner of sixty Goodfish Road has submitted an application for Site Plan Control Agreement with the town for a five hundred and eighty point six three square meter warehouse to store building materials associated with the applicant's construction business. Site Plan Control Agreements are a means for municipalities to regulate specific types of development. The lot is designated as industrial in the town's official plan and light industrial M one in the zoning bylaw, which lists warehouses as a permitted use. Under the official plan, industrial lots are inclusive for Site Plan Control. As such, we're going through the motions of a Site Plan Control Agreement with the owner. An additional consideration is that the building is under six hundred square meters and will not have any washroom facilities or office spaces. So it would be considered a pipe part-nine building under the Ontario Building Code. An application fee of two thousand one hundred and ninety dollars was collected. Again, a portion of which goes to recover the legal costs of registering the agreement on title. And I will, if there are more questions.
Thank you. I just, I just want to state that I'm happy to see this development. This business is owned by a longstanding business owner in the town of Perkin Lake who has contributed to our community in several ways over multiple decades. So I definitely wish him continued success and hopefully this building adds to that. Anything further from members of council? Nothing noted? On the reading of the motion, just wait.
Certainly, moved by Council Rick Owens, seconded by Council Casey Owens. They resolve at report number twenty twenty-four, D E B eighteen, entitled Site Plan Control Agreement Application, sixty Goodfish Road be received. That council approved the proposed Site Plan Control Agreement for sixty Goodfish Road. And that council authorized the marriage of the Perkin Lake Executive Site Plan Control Agreement between the corporation and the town of Perkin Lake and the A A Rural Construction Limited for the subject property and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, that the authorizing bylaw be given three readings on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number six point three, proposed zoning bylaw amendment thirty-nine Second Street East, Brooklyn Rose on, you may continue.
To you, Madam Mayor of council. I won't be going into too much detail with the report as all of the information contained in the report will be presented again at the public meeting in detail. So just as an overview, the owners of thirty-nine Second Street East have applied for an amendment to the town zoning bylaw. They're looking to rezone the lands from institutional to residential median density with special provisions in order to permit or residential units within the existing building. The previous institutional use as a church is no longer present on the property. So the current owners are looking to convert the space for residential use. Under the Planning Act, at least one public meeting must be held in order to give the public an opportunity to provide input on the proposed amendment. The property is already designated as residential in the town's official plan and the provincial policy statement does encourage redevelopment for residential uses. So other than dealing with the zoning amendment itself, there are no concerns with higher level planning policies. And the public meeting is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, July sixteenth at four P M.
Thank you. Any questions? Council Dykens?
Yes, to you, Madam Mayor, is that four o'clock the correct time?
It is.
Thank you.
Council Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship. Do they have any parking required for floorless?
To you, Madam Mayor, to the Council Owen. They do have enough room on site for parking. At the moment, I don't know if they have it set up, maybe able to drive, but they do have enough space on the lot for the required parking. Thank you.
Anything further? Madam Mayor?
Certainly, moved by Council Janice Ranger, seconded by Council Lad Shaba, be resolved at report number twenty twenty-four, D E B nineteen, entitled Proposed Bylaw Amendment Thirty-nine Second Street East be received. And finally, that a public meeting be held on Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at four P M to allow the public to provide comments on the proposal by law amendment.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number six point four, Town of Perkin Lake Student Bursary, two thousand and twenty-four recipients, Alan Smith, C A O.
To you, Madam Mayor, to Madam Mayor of council. On June the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, council approved the student bursary policy. This policy provides guidance for the town of Perkin Lake in providing financial assistance to deserving, eligible and graduating grade twelve students from both our local high schools who are registered for college or university. Two thousand and twenty-four is the first year that students have been selected for the bursary. And I am pleased to announce that the successful award recipients this year are Theo Kurtz from K L D C S and Inigla Garrett, oh, my shout out, right, from E S C E N. They both receive five hundred dollars. The award will be presented during the respective graduating ceremonies. Their picture and essays will be framed and placed on the wall in the lobby of town hall. We plan on continuing this procedure of recognition with future awarded recipients. Any questions, Eric?
I just want to state that I am so pleased that the bursary has moved forward. I believe that youth need to be encouraged to enter into public service. We know over the last few years that less and less people are interested in public service. So I hope this inspires our youth. And even though both recipients are very, very well suited to this, I do want to quote Mr. Kurtz, who stated in his essay, people, people often talk about what this town is lacking compared to a big city. But I only see what big cities lack when compared to Perkin Lake and surrounding area. That is such a beautiful sentiment and, and you know, I just really want to congratulate both recipients. Anything further from members of council? Nothing further? Madam clerk?
Certainly, moved by Council Patrick Evans, seconded by Council Rick Owen, be resolved at report number twenty twenty-four, C A O zero zero seven, entitled Town of Perkin Lake's Student Bursary, two thousand and twenty-four recipients be received for inquiries.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number six point five, Asset Management Plan Update Phase Three, Sean LeCarr, Director of Corporate Services, and Lloyd Crawford, Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, council. We added Lloyd's name on because he was, he's been involved with every, every step of the way. I'm going to call him up if there are any questions that he might have to answer. It's a hundred, hundred and fifty page document, so I don't know what it said. So an updated asset management plan was required under the Ontario Regulation, the Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight seventeen for phase three by July first, two thousand and twenty-four. That is the reason why the report is coming forward. Many parts of Ontario existing infrastructure is degrading faster than is being repaired to help address the issue of problems implemented in this asset management planning municipal infrastructure regulation. Phase two, which was due last July, were core assets. The town completed the phase into two thousand and twenty-two and we brought it to council, so it is approved. Phase three was due, is due July first and to include all municipal infrastructure assets, including current levels of service and cost to maintain these levels. And just a future phase four is due July first, two thousand and twenty-five, to build on phase three, which would plans to shift proposed levels of service and life cycle management. The town had been in contract, on contract with PSD Citywide, which I think we got them in as a consultant prior, required to to complete phase three. Just wanted to mention, so this, this was completed mid, mid and two thousand and twenty-three. At that time, it was, it was decided that we would, we would hold off and update the, the plans to two thousand and twenty-two assets in terms of, we thought we had enough time to have done by July first, two thousand and twenty-four. And also, we did notice that a lot of the values, equipment and that kind of things kind of shot up to us that they, they seem to be low compared to what we, what we, you know, for, for prices. The C P I was used, was being used instead of actually replacing values. So the C A O directed staff to continue updating assets two thousand and twenty-two, improve the values. The intent was to have it ready for July first. Unfortunately, we're just a little bit behind on it, so almost, almost complete. So we do plan on bringing, bringing still just phase three, but it will be updated to the two thousand and twenty-two assets and better values to a meeting in Q two, two thousand and twenty-four, and hopefully now the consultant to speak to as well. In the new plan, there'll also be some upgrades to the on the new strategic plan, I just want to mention that. So if you did read through this, it still has the strategic plan and it's just a section on it kind of thing, so it will be up to it. The asset management plan is updated, includes overall with basic costs of asset categories totaling four hundred and seventy-four million. Nine percent of the assets are assessed condition data and the rest rely on basically age of the, age of the infrastructure. The town historically commits approximately three point zero eight million from funding reserves each year, leaving an annual funding gap of seven million for capital, for capital assets. Suggested capital funding gap and to help eliminate the town's infrastructure deficit, the new asset plan provides the following recommendations. An average annual tax increase of one percent for twenty years. An average annual water rate increase of one point two percent for twenty years. An average annual sanitary sewer rate increase of four point two percent for twenty years. These recommendations will take into consideration each year during the town's budget process. Having said that, I, I do want to just to mention that we are going to bring one forward in the next couple of months that will be, will be better, better updated, well, better updated assets, better updated values, and so I would say that these, these will change in the next plan. Another reason for bringing the plan forward for July first, and we do have a large, a large, as everyone knows, we do have a large application out for funding some, some water infrastructure and we just want to make sure that we have a plan in place that is compliant, so this plan does, does does come across compliant, so. So on phase three, once we have the second one approved in phase three, which we hope is around September, we will work with P S D, P S D Citywide on phase four to have it ready for July first, two thousand and twenty-five. And we'll open any questions you might have.
Council Kylie?
Yeah, through you, your worship. First of all, thank you. I can see this was a monumental task, to say the least. I'm just wondering through clerk Jim, it would be possible to, when we get a report the size of this three hundred pages plus, that if we could not get that report a week earlier, so we'd have time to read it. By getting it on a Friday afternoon and Monday is like getting a book reported earlier. Book to read and have to do a book report on Monday. It's, I find I skipped through a lot of the areas, which this is a very important aspect of, of our municipal operation. I would have liked the opportunity of more time to digest what is going on.
If it's the will of council to want to change its procedural bylaw, then I, I will, I can address that when the, the amendments are brought forward to council. But at this time, it is very difficult for administration to be able to give you an agenda two weeks in advance when the municipal information that is provided to you in the clerk's office is happening week of the agenda. So this is something that your council may wish to have a conversation with the C A O about and then determine whether or not there needs to be an adjustment in the procedural bylaw.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Council Shaba?
Yeah, thank you, Mark. But I'm here. I just want to address the, the, what you raised here about the capital funding gap. Do you want to explain? The first item there, which is the annual tax increase of one percent for twenty years. It's not very clear to me is that, let's say, we approve a budget of X percentage. So this one percent will go on top of that or will be embedded in that whatever we approve? So how's this, how, how is this going to be worked out? I just, just remember, the, the, to, to, Council Shaba.
As far as I am concerned, the one percent is, is, it just depends how we're, if we're looking after capital that year, the one percent could be included in if it's a larger capital project. But the one percent should be an extra amount that's needed each year to, to meet this funding, funding gap, so.
And just to follow up, so we have been doing that for water, wastewater, if you recall?
Yeah, I get those, yeah, I, I get those. I didn't have any problem with those. They're separate anyways, but, but I just don't, didn't see how, factor any one percent. So again, what you're saying, through you, my, my, what you're saying is that whether it's approved for a certain amount, so this one percent will be on top of that.
It should be, it should be, if you, if you're looking to meet this, meet this. Now, having said that, if you're doing a very large amount of, of capital in one year, you could use that one percent as part of the, the capital, like it was extra capital that you might not normally. All right, all right.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask the treasurer to come up for clarification about the process of what we have been doing regarding passing bylaws about the targeted percentage versus what we do at budget time?
You, you, Madam Mayor, to council. It's characterized correctly in the sense that the hundred, in this case, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of our budget would be earmarked for capital as directed by the plan. Any particular year, there is no requirement to put it into a reserve in the year that you raise that money. So if we're running large projects, the hundred and thirty thousand, could it be, end up being our portion or a portion of our contribution to those projects? You know, you often sit here and approve projects at sixty-six two thirds percent funding or seventy-five percent funding, and we have to come up with the difference. So in the past year, or when we ran the Swastika project, first year that we had the one percent in, it was used as part of that. In the current year, it was expected to be used as part of the Taylor Avenue project. You know, the ideal would be to start putting it into a reserve to identify and specifically put it into a reserve. But if you remember the, the pressures that were felt by council and staff, you know, we didn't identify it that way. We put it to a current current capital project. You know, that's, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification, Council Owens. Owen?
To you, your worship. Under financial considerations, my concern is that only nine percent of all assets have assessed condition data. So the rest rely on age, the asset, to determine the condition. That's only one set of data. You can have two vehicles that are ten years old. Ones cost you nothing in repairs and the others cost you a fortune. And hopefully, when we get our fleet management program, that nine percent will go up. But to me, that's an incomplete and not necessarily factual way of assessing our assets. It's only one factor. And I mean, even if you're looking at water pipes, you know, age is only one factor, not water pipes is a different example because we don't know until they break usually. But I'm sure there's other assets where, like, it just seems low to me to, to base a big study on only nine percent.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The nine percent is really just a reflection that our rolling stock or equipment, much of what we have in our buildings is a very low relative number to the stuff we have under the ground. The, and the ninety-one percent that's left over, it is age-based. It's more or less what we're stuck with, without putting cameras down the pipes and digging things up. So I, I don't know that it's understated. And I think what we'll find with the next set of reports is that it's even less than nine percent because we just ran a sewage, a very large sewage project last year that we finished. And I think the biggest reflection you're going to see in the upcoming report is a very large increase in replacement costs for our infrastructure, the underground stuff. So that percentage could even be going down. Yes, we've increased the cost of equipment quite a bit in the new report coming up. But that percentage is probably high, even though maybe with regards to specific equipment, we've identified what state, state is in. It's not an age-based, if it's a truck, you know, what state it's in is, is used. It's not just age-based. Well, we can look at it, look at it, look at it and assess it. So, you know, age-based is really driven mostly for the infrastructure equipment. There is some age-based stuff in there. But it's, it's a mix.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything further from members of council on this report? Nothing further? Madam clerk?
Moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Janice Ranger. It resolved at report number twenty twenty-four, Corp. thirty-three, entitled Asset Management Plan. Excuse me, Asset Management Plan Updates Being Free be received. And that council approved the updated asset management plan as presented. And finally, the updated A M P be posted on the Town of Perkin Lake's official website.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number six point six, Town Sponsorship Request, A L C C Brand Application to the Prague's Breath Foundation, Sean LeCarr, Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, council. The Kirkland Curling Club has submitted an application, which you see in the attachment to the Prague's Breath Foundation for a five thousand miller grant to help with purchase of a new condenser with a total cost of eighty-three thousand eight hundred. The Kirkland has, the Kirkland Curling Club has requested the town sponsor the application to ensure meets the foundation's eligibility criteria. If you do remember, we brought one forward not very long ago, it was actually for the same project. On June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, council approved the town's charitable sponsorship policy and this request does follow in line with the same. To ensure all rules and regulations are adhered to, the town will have a sponsorship agreement, which is in the attachments to, signed by the both parties. The Frog's Breath Foundation also requires a final grant report be completed by the applicant to ensure the funds were used for the intended use. There's no financial implications as the grant received is immediately offset by a donation of the equivalent amount to the Kirkland Curling Club. As a request for the sponsor adheres to the charitable sponsorship policy, administration recommends that the council As a request for the sponsor that adheres to the charitable sponsorship policy, administration recommends that the council approve the request from the Kirkland Lake Curling Club. The town has sponsored their funding application for the Frogster Foundation for a grant in the sum of five thousand dollars. And the treasurer direct any funds received by the town could be forwarded as a donation of the same value to the Kirkland.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None noted, Madam Clerk.
Certainly moved by Counselor Longchala, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. It resolved a report number twenty twenty-four, court eighteen, entitled Town Sponsorship Request, K L C C Grant Application to the Frog's Brand Foundation be received. And that council approved the request from the Kirkland Lake Curling Club, K L C C, for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake to sponsor an application to the Frog's Brand Foundation F B F for a grant in the sum of five thousand dollars to support their condenser replacement project. And that council authorized the mayor municipal clerk to sign a sponsorship agreement with the K L C C as present, as presented. And that council authorized the treasurer to receive any funds granted by F B F and to forward a donation of same value to the K L C C. And finally, that an execution by law be brought forward for three readings on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All in favor, opposed, none noted. Oh, Counselor Owen.
No, just, I, I missed the next item. Um, on the agenda, I do have a conflict of interest on that item.
Okay, so just one second, please. So all in favor, opposed, item carried unanimous. Thank you for raising that. We're just gonna take a five-minute recess, so Counselor Owen can, um, fill out his. Thank you. Okay, we shall now resume, so Counselor Owens may proceed.
Yes, and again, I apologize to council, Mr. Owen, my lieutenant. I recall and declaring deemed uh, pecuniary interest on the agenda of the meeting dated June eighteenth, open meeting. Item six point seven, Kirkland Soccer Association Field Lease Agreement. It's deemed, the matter may affect my parent, my spouse or my child. Uh, nature of the interests as follows. My wife, Sharnine, is on the Kirkland Soccer Association Executive.
Thank you, sir.
Item six point seven, Kirkland Soccer Association Soccer Field Lease Agreement, Kim Fockers, Director of Community Services. Welcome. Thank you, Madam, through you to the council. So we are presenting a, an updated soccer lease. Um, the last one that was drafted was in nineteen ninety-nine. So we figured it was time for a fulsome review and a much-needed update. The new lease, it outlines responsibilities that the town has, uh, along with responsibilities of the association. Um, it does specify that the soccer association is responsible for maintenance of the fields, along with all the facilities located on those fields. Sanctioned activities as well, and the, um, major change is instead of a five-year lease that is auto-renewed, it is now going to be a two-year with a clause in the lease for this automatic renewal. Um, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for members of council? Counselor Dykens.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, to, uh, the director. Um, if it's an automatic renewal every two years, I'm confused about that. Like, if you're automatically renewed here, why is that? Why is there a time frame? Like?
Yes.
Yeah. Why isn't it just indefinite? I'm just curious why.
Yeah, so through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Dykens. Uh, the reason for this is to just review all of the, uh, the use of the fields. So for the last, well, since nineteen ninety-nine, they've utilized all four fields listed in the lease. Um, with the exception of Queen Elizabeth Soccer Field. So there would be potentially other use for that field. So by having this automatic renewal that we kind of look at every two years, um, we're able to kind of survey the needs of the community at that time. Um, that's basically it.
Well, um, the term that's confusing me is automatic renewal. So if you're gonna review it every two years, but it's, it's gonna be renewed, I guess.
So it'll come forward with a, with a bylaw, um, uh, every two years.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so Madam Clerk has a clarification.
Okay, sorry. So wouldn't, uh, through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council. It wouldn't come back every two years. The autumn renewal removes the requirement of the director to have to come back to council to get approval to re-enter into an agreement with the association every two years. So the indefinite part is to allow for the continuity of the requirement in the community. Um, however, the director would be reviewing at every two-year mark the, the requirements of the association. It just removes the requirement to have to come back to council for a continued approval for the operational use of the facility.
Counselor Dykens.
Um, this, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Um, so that means you, you still have the option to say no if something goes crazy. Okay, that was. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Anything further from members of council? Madam Clerk.
Certainly, and through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council, just for, uh, information. All of the agreements for facility use have a notice provision and a termination clause that identifies against all that's perครับ to refuse. Okay. Um, moved by Counselor Dennis Ranger, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. It resolved that report number twenty twenty-four, C S O O five, entitled Kirkland Soccer Association Soccer Field Lease Agreement be received. And that council authorized the mayor municipal clerk to execute the lease agreement as presented between the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake and Kirkland Lake Soccer Association, which is K L S A, for use of the soccer fields for the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five seasons, with an option to extend to two-year terms indefinitely. And finally, that an execution by law be brought forward for three readings on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number six point eight, Community Grants Program Request for Funding Rotary Club of Kirkland Lake and Labor Director of Development and Entertainment Services.
Good evening, uh, through Madam Mayor to council. Uh, what I can bring forward tonight is a recommendation from the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee under the Community Grants Program for the Rotary Club of Kirkland Lake. Uh, this, uh, five thousand dollar application came through uh, and was recommended to move forward to tonight's meeting, uh, from our April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Uh, this is an ask to update the, uh, photo gallery along government, uh, road. Uh, their theme of choice was Kirkland Lake, the right environment. And, uh, it truly does fit with our, uh, current state of our economic development uh, strategic plan that is ongoing. Um, I would be happy to take any questions in regards to this.
Any questions for members of council? None noted, all have their reading emotions.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. It resolved that report number twenty twenty-four, E V fifteen, entitled Community Grant Program Request for Funding Rotary Club of Kirkland Lake be received. And that council received the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee's recognition dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, surrounding the funding request made by Rotary Club of Kirkland Lake under the Community Grants Program. And finally, that council approved Rotary Club of Kirkland Lake's request under the Community Grants Program for an in-kind contribution of five thousand dollars towards, uh, to be used to assist in updating the downtown photo gallery.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number six point nine, pardon me, Community Grants Program Request for Funding for Kirkland Lake Aquatics Club Sting Race. Dan may proceed.
Uh, good evening, through Madam Mayor to council. Uh, what I have before you is a second application that has been brought forward through the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee, uh, for the Sting Race Aquatic, uh, Club of Kirkland Lake to offset costs of operating, uh, swim meets being, uh, brought to Kirkland Lake through their season. Um, they're asked us for five thousand dollars. Uh, and, uh, it does align with our, uh, our mandate under the Community Grants Program. Uh, the Kirkland Lake Sting Race Aquatics Club has, uh, utilized the fund previously. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for members of council? None noted, Madam Clerk.
Certainly moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Ranger. It resolved a report number twenty twenty-four, E V sixteen, entitled Community Grants Program Request for Funding Kirkland Lake Aquatics Club Sting Race be received. And that council received the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee's recommendation dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, surrounding the funding requests made by the Kirkland Lake Aquatics Club Sting Race under the Community Grants Program. And by the council approved the Kirkland Lake Aquatics Club Sting Race request under the Community Grants Program for an in-kind contribution of five thousand dollars to be used to offset costs relating to hosting aquatic needs.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number six point one zero, Supplemental Low-Speed Vehicles Pilot Program, Director Mayne, proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, to the rest of council. I will, uh, bring forth, uh, a follow-up this evening that stems from several reports regarding low-speed vehicles and the pilot program uh, that is currently well underway in the province and council's wishes to solicit clarification from the former Kirkland Lake Police Services Board. Uh, I'll give you just a recap on the timeline, just as this has, has, um, come before my time. Uh, so August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the former, the now former Kirkland Lake Public, or Police Services Board made a recommendation at council. And the recommendation was to participate in the L S V program for the community of Kirkland Lake. Uh, further to the, uh, Police Services Board's recommendation, Counselor Shaba brought a motion in August of twenty twenty-three. And the motion was passed September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, at the meeting of council. The full recommendation is in your, uh, report package for reference. On January fourth, twenty twenty-four, administration brought a report recommending the L S V program. However, council sought to defer, uh, the decision and ask for clarification on the matter, uh, to the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board. Uh, the discussion surrounding the deferral was given such time to seek clarification from now the former Police Services Board, uh, whether it wanted to make, uh, council, it wanted council to make a decision on participating in the L S V pilot, given the town has been receiving concerns and complaints, um, surrounding the misuse. Uh, and the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board wanted the town to engage in a review of, uh, enforcement of, uh, four in particular bylaws, them being the personal mobility devices bylaw, uh, motorized snow vehicles bylaw, off-road vehicles bylaw, and traffic and parking bylaw as amended. Uh, then on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at the farm, formal, um, Police Services Board meeting, uh, the former Director of Development Services and the C A O presented a summary of the report. Uh, and the cleric, clarification was sought. Uh, as such, the Police Services Board resolved the following. Uh, Police Services Board recommended the implementation and regulation of the L S Vs in the community and that the review of bylaw sixteen point oh four, oh five nine, being the bylaw to regulate personal conveyance devices in the town Kirkland Lake. Uh, given the changes in leadership in early spring of twenty twenty-four, uh, corporate strategic plan and the full engagement of staff on the matter, administration is now prepared to provide council with the supplemental information and a fulsome review of the former Police Services Board, uh, along with the local O B P detachment on the town's proposed participation in the L S V program. The clarification received from the Police Services Board was that the town participate in the pilot along with the review of the by, of bylaw sixteen oh five nine. Uh, the clarification received from the Ontario Provincial Police is that the absence of the town's participation in the L S V program, and that's passing a bylaw to that effect, all persons seem to be operating a low-speed vehicle in the town of Kirkland Lake, uh, not as a mobility aid. I think that's, uh, a key component, uh, of tonight's discussion is that the, um, current, uh, perceived L S Vs, uh, in the town of Kirkland Lake right now are registered as mobility aids, not L S V, and that is, uh, clarification that has been sought. Um, will be ticketed and will be asked to cease travel on municipal designated highways with their low-speed vehicle in accordance with the Highway Traffic Act. Uh, the police continue to enforce the town's personal conveyance device bylaw. Um, I will read, uh, in the report, uh, the, uh, other alternatives uh, that can be taken. Um, and one is that council directs administration to conduct a review of all the existing bylaws, as mentioned earlier in my report. Uh, the previous to that would be that we keep status quo. Uh, the, uh, pilot is well underway. We are under three years left of this pilot and that we, we leave it to see with the final report that comes, uh, from the province and the decision, uh, that is made. Um, or we pass the necessary bylaw to allow the low-speed vehicles in town of Kirkland Lake. Um, the reason that's not being recommended, um, uh, from the former Police Services Board, that it's difficult to quantify an expense for both riders and the town relative to the remainder of the L S V program. Uh, in conclusion, um, consultation has occurred surrounding the clarification on the recommendations to investigate, um, in, uh, and given the timeframe remaining that we, uh, have put forth the recommendation that we have today. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for members of council? None noted, Madam Clerk.
That may move by Counselor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Counselor Longchawa. It resolved that report number twenty twenty-four, E V seventeen, entitled Supplemental Low-Speed Vehicle Pilot Program be received. Excuse me, and that council suspended town's participation in Ontario's Low-Speed Vehicle Pilot Program. And finally, that administration under take a review of the following, the town's personal conveyance devices bylaw, the motorized snow vehicles bylaw, the off-road vehicles bylaw, and the traffic and parking bylaw as amended.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you. Item number six point one one, Municipal Lead Inspector Appointment, Jennifer Montoy, municipal clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the members of council. Uh, as the report was comprehensive, I'll keep the summary brief. Uh, the report before you this evening is to seek a decision on the requirement of updating the town's minimum appointment of its municipal lead inspector and to have a staff operating as such officially recognized and to report them, uh, to the Ontario, uh, Ministry of Agricultural Food and Rural Affairs in accordance with the Weed Control Act. Uh, administration note that the lack of updates to the formal appointment bylaw is likely an oversight and is being classified as general housekeeping. Town staff have acted in this capacity with the appropriate, appropriate pesticide training for the purpose of eradicating, eradicating invasive and not the weeds. Uh, to mitigate this stalemate from reoccurring, succession of the role and the continuity of certification has been discussed with the appoint, uh, the appointed staffs, uh, reporting department head, the human resources division, including the information necessary to update child descriptions, inclusion of provincial training and reporting requirements, official reporting of formal appointments, and the creation of an internal standard operating procedure for inquiry, management, and enforcement of the town's invasive, noxious weed, weed program. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This concludes the summary on this item for you this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for members of council? I just wanted to note, um, this kind of brings to light how many duties our staff perform, which we take for granted and are completely unaware of. Uh, this is vital for our environment, and I just certainly appreciate the opportunity to acknowledge that that I was continued to fulfill this role unbeknownst to probably most of the community. So thank you for that. Madam Clerk.
Certainly, moved by Counselor Longchawa, seconded by Counselor Rick Owens. It resolved that report number twenty twenty-four, A D M fourteen, entitled Municipal Lead Inspector Appointment be received. And that Steve Brant will be appointed as lead inspector for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake. And finally, that the appointment by law, uh, be brought forward for three readings on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All in favor, opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number six point one two, Proposed Housekeeping to Open Air Outdoor Training Bylaw. Earl Gray, Director of Emergency Services slash Fire Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, to the council. So the, uh, the new report's been brought forward, um, just as a general housekeeping. Um, the original bylaw was passed in ninety-eight. So the, uh, the new report we brought forward, um, just as a general housekeeping, um, the original bylaw was passed in ninety eight. Um, so it doesn't have a lot of our acts, um, that are required to follow. And, uh, our legislative, uh, requirements. So that's our main reason for bringing forth the bylaw. Because current, uh, come up to the modern definitions and actually to have a, uh, a penalty section added in under the, uh, uh, Ontario part one fines. So I'm open to any questions if you may have.
Any questions or comments from members of council? None noted, Madam Clerk.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. It resolved that report number twenty twenty four F E S zero zero one. Entitled proposed housekeeping to open air outdoor burning bylaw be received. And that council approves of proposed changes to the open air burning bylaw as presented. And finally, that the proposed bylaw be presented, as sorry, as presented be brought forward for three readings on July sixteenth, join, join the board.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item six point one three, proposed housekeeping to fireworks bylaw. Sir, you may continue.
Again, thank you, ma'am. Um, so again, this is another, uh, older policy that was, uh, on the books, uh, dated back to two. Um, again, no legislative, um, markings on the original document. Unfortunately, there is a lot of municipal act, that P P A, the explosive act. Um, that we may need to follow. Um, and as a general, uh, a safety issue, um, currently on right now, we have no idea who's selling fireworks in the municipality. Um, so we're not able to track and see what they're actually storing. There is requirements of legally what they're allowed to keep on hand. So it's just a, a matter to make it safer for everybody in the community and, uh, ensure responsibility. Again, open to any questions.
Any questions for members of council?
Uh.
Councillor Shaba?
My question was to the previous, uh, item, but we already passed it out, I asked whatever.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
I think, uh, moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. They resolved a report number twenty twenty four F B S oh oh two entitled proposed housekeeping to fireworks bylaw be received. And the council approved the proposed changes to the fireworks bylaw as presented. And finally, that the proposed bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings on July sixteen, twenty twenty four.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, thank you, sir. Item number seven, considerations of notice of motion, there are none this evening. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws, three point one.
You, Madam Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Let's see.
Um. At the June fourth council meeting, administration updated council Kirkland Lakes twenty three, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four connecting units program. Which entails research, same government road, uh, use down Burnside Drive and installation of a pedestrian crosswalk at the sidewalk. At that meeting, the project designer's concept dash stressed that the most suitable location for the, for the crosswalk. Has been determined to be on the west side of the Burnside Drive intersection. The crosswalk will be designed and installed in accordance with Ontario Regulation four oh two fifteen. Being consistent with the level two type D crossover in accordance with, uh, Ontario Traffic Manual Book fifteen. And will follow the guidelines provided in the Minister of Transportation Pedestrian Crossover H S B Policy Memo for Pedestrian Crossovers. Now, the implementation of this crosswalk entails the updating of table F one and schedule F of the town Kirkland Lakes parking bylaw. Notice was given, uh, that enabled public comment about the crosswalk and the installation of the sidewalk. The town received a couple of questions from the public. And, uh, Mr. Steve Ranta, role supervisor, uh, will address these, uh, questions. Including a review of why the west side and Burnside Drive was selected versus the east side. I'm passing to Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, through you, council. Um, the concerns that we received. Um, there was, most of them were positive. Um, in fact, they're all positive, I mistake. Uh, it's just that some of them had some suggestions as to what they, they would like to see personally. Um, um, most of the, the comments, uh, as I say, agreed with the, the positioning of the crosswalk on the west side. Um, there were some, and if I may, um, the positioning of, there was some communication difficulty with the gentleman from Concept Dash. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to clarify. Um, the, um, the reason for the positioning that in that instance is that if you were to put the crosswalk on the east side. Of that intersection, there is a line of sight difficulty with some trees on pers, on a private property that we would not be able to address. So, uh, to eliminate that, uh, problem, which was pretty much the only one line of sight. Uh, for position, positioning on the east side. Uh, the west side was chosen, and the other reason why the west side was chosen, and it wasn't very clear from the consult, was that we did consult M T O. And they had, uh, two, uh, representatives other than the, uh, that, um, sorry. What was, uh, Melissa Rogers Wilkie, uh, the Northeastern Operations Division of M T O. Um, had them consult with, uh, Concept Dash and ourselves and they stipulated that the, to put it, to put it, um, on the east side again would also, uh, it would fall into that. Air area where the speed transition coming from ninety down to the seventy, down to the fifty. Would pose difficulties in their experience. Um, it may, what they, what they said kind of contravenes what the Transportation Association of Canada stipulates. As being acceptable. But for safety's sake, and historically from their standpoint, the best place for it to be would be on the west side.
I could just, um, as Steve, you address the, one of the, uh, questions from, uh, public. Until the, the suggestion of, um, user traffic waves.
So, um, Madam Mayor, through you, council, and you, um, yeah, again, these consultants, the consultants that we, we, uh, conferred with, um, from the M T O stipulated again, the amount of volume of traffic in that area, uh, foot traffic, there's, you know, if you use. Vehicle traffic and foot traffic doesn't warrant traffic luck. So these, this crosswalk that with its design, they call it an R R F B, which is rapid flashing beacons, uh, is more than sufficient. And, um, both the director and myself and, um, in our discussions, would also like supplement, um, some of the lighting. Um, so that there's warning signs that would come on. About, say, fifty meters back from the intersection on both sides. So that would give, uh, you know, a warning that there is somebody in the crosswalk far enough ahead that they, if they were going a little too quickly. That they would have the opportunity to slow down in time.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for members of council, councillor Owen?
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a question, it's a comment. I did receive a call from one person. They cross us at that intersection on a regular basis. And she confirmed what councillor Owens had said at the previous meeting. That if you put it on the east side, there is a blind spot. Um, and, uh, she, uh, she agreed with council's decision to put it on the, the west side. And that's somebody that crosses there on a regular basis, so. I, I think that sort of confirms what the consultants have said. Disproves what I was going, that's all.
Councillor Owens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's more than common as well, it's, I hope. See this this summer, not, not home of Burke on now, but, um. When these lights do go up, are we gonna implant, uh, do a campaign, like education campaign? Cause I seen when Second Street went out, it's a fifty zone, so people. Tend to go slower when you're coming around the corner from a hundred and you're supposed to stop, slow down on the tracks, but you don't, until you pass the hospital. I don't think I'd wanna walk out with the lights flashing and just turn on the car cause someone might get hit, so.
You, Madam Mayor, uh, yes, it will be a public, uh, awareness campaign. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything further? Councillor Kylie?
To your worship, I'm pleased to see that, uh, having the, uh, lights at fifty feet before and after. Uh, that's gonna make a huge difference in my mind and control the traffic to slow down, so. Well done.
Anything further? Madam Clerk.
Certainly moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. They resolved that the following bylaw be read, number passed, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Kirknessfield Corporation. Be affixed there too, bylaw number twenty four forty six being a bylaw. Amending bylaw fifteen seventeen for the regulation of standing and development on highways or parts of highways. Under the jurisdiction of the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, eight point two, bylaw number twenty four dash oh four seven.
One two, Mr. Scale. Introducing.
Yes, um. To Madam, I would like to use Winnie Purcella, and he is our, um, we are C B O. He's covering a material release and we're very pleased to have Winnie on board. He brings a great deal of experience and, uh, we're really excited to work with Winnie for the next eighteen months. Thank you, Winnie.
Thank you, welcome, sir.
Uh, third one of the reading of the bylaws are moved by councillor Rick Owen. Seconded by councillor Lon Chawa. It resolved that the following bylaw be read, number passed, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Kirknessfield Corporation. Be affixed there too, bylaw number twenty four forty seven being a bylaw for appointment of an interim chief building official and property standards officer.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous, item number three, uh, eight point three, bylaw number twenty four dash oh four eight.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. It resolved that the following bylaw be read, number passed, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Kirknessfield Corporation. Be affixed there too, bylaw number twenty four forty eight being a bylaw for appointment of an interim deputy chief building official. Deputy Property Standards Officer and Building Inspectors.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item eight point four, bylaw number twenty four dash oh four nine.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. It resolved that the following bylaw be read, number passed, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Kirknessfield Corporation. Be affixed there too, bylaw number twenty four forty nine. Being a bylaw to provide for delegated authority and authorized civil maritalization services.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous, item number eight point five, bylaw number twenty four dash oh five zero.
Moved by councillor Lon Chawa, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. It resolved that the following bylaw be read, number passed, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Kirknessfield Corporation. Be affixed there too, bylaw number twenty four fifty, being a bylaw to be lots one sixteen and one seventeen. Uh, of registered plan M one forty T, not to be registered, uh, seven seventy two and seven seventy six government relief list.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item eight point six, bylaw number twenty four dash oh five one.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. It resolved that the following bylaw be read, number passed, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Kirknessfield Corporation. And the seal of the corporation be affixed there too, bylaw number twenty four fifty one. Being a bylaw to appoint a lead inspector for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item number nine, questions from council to staff. We haven't had one in almost two years. Um, item nine point one was, um, introduced by councillor Shaba and I believe C A Os that will be speaking on this matter.
Uh, to Madam Mayor, to members of council, this regarding, uh, councillor Shaba's, um, request to update on the Chuck Hughes Playground. Um, the equipment was ordered in September of twenty twenty three from Henderson Regulation Equipment Limited. Uh, now, during that time, uh, it was doing retired and there's some changes to the operations which slowed down things a little bit. Uh, now the equipment was shipped to the complex on May seventeenth of this year. Uh, Henderson has contracted installation out to C R C S Recreation. Uh, Director Cloppers met with C R C S Recreation yesterday afternoon. At the new site of the Chuck Hughes Playground. Uh, C R C S was provided the required information. Needs for installation including the, well, the expired location last year. C R C S will be ready to install as soon as they receive the updated locates. It's going to take you two weeks. Uh, once on site, the installation will take three days. Uh, this includes the excavation, installation and surfacing. So I've been thinking about, about three weeks can, I would say, in order to, um, have the playground up and running.
Well, thank you for the update.
Excellent, thank you. Okay.
Uh, moved by councillor Lon Chawa, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. It resolved that the update from administration on the Chuck Hughes Playground installation be received.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item number ten, notices of motion. There are none noted this evening, item number eleven, councillors' reports, members of council. Okay. Um, before I read my report, I just, uh, I wanna make the townspeople aware that, um, administration and council are very well aware of the recent flooding. Um, and we, um, expect to have a report back to the whole of council and therefore the community in July. Um, definitely considering, um, the increased frequency and what we expect, um, as the climate continues to change. We know and we recognize that this flooding, we cannot allow it to continue. And so we are going to try our best to find remediation and in that, the report will be coming in July, um, at our next meeting in July. Um, I did receive an email from Raymond Thomas Belet. Who wished to extend his gratitude to former mayor Tony and Tony Ozzy. Who took the day off to introduce Mr. Belet to the mayor of North Bay, which reportedly led to his technological journey. Resulting in a second place finish at the International Robotic Sailing Regatta in Amesbury, Massachusetts. Mr. Belet wrote, we often forget those who believed in us when other thoughts we were merely dreaming. Tony was one of those visionaries who saw potential and facilitated collaboration with the right people. While in Amesbury in early June, Mr. Belet had the international team sign a paddle. He will be presenting to the prime minister. He ended his correspondence with the assurance he will inform Mr. Trudeau of the incredible town where his journey began. This brings great, great, great pride to the community of Kirkland Lake. And on behalf of the town, I extend our congratulations on his second place finish. As I understand, it was no small feat. The Chamber of Commerce will be supporting the first mayor's breakfast in October of this year as a networking event for local members. President Emma Archer, through conversations with Director of Development and Enterprise Services Dan Labrider. Will be working on this initiative to bring members of the chamber together to speak during Small Business Week. About the issues that matter the most to them. This is an excellent first step for the local Chamber of Commerce to expand their offering to members and network with town administration and staff. Planet Use Steering Committee and Post Data Collection Workshop was an informative, uh, few hours, speaking on the next step for the group. Include, including dissemination plans. Our facilitator from Iceland was quite impressed on how much work to misdemeanor groups have done and how well our action plans are coming together. So kudos to all the people that work on those, um, steering committees and action plan committees. I attended the Central School, uh, annual arts gala. This is an incredible end of the year school event that seems to get bigger and better each year. I congratulate the staff, volunteers and families involved in making the celebration as wonderful it is. I know council members, including myself, appreciate all the invitations we received throughout the year. And we would be thrilled to attend more, uh, opportunities to engage with our youth. During the T H U meeting, there was ongoing discussions toward the merger of P H U and T H U. A financial audit was presented and both health, health units and the merger working group are diligently working for the best interest of public health in our area. Also, a letter of support will be coming to municipalities regarding the possible phase out of pre-private well testing in Ontario. I met with members of the newly formed Kirkland Lake Beautification Committee. I met with members of the newly formed Kirkland Lake Beautification Committee and was invited to join. And now councillor Ranger has joined as well. The purpose of this committee is to encourage all members of our town to be a good neighbor. By cleaning their homes and properties and around their businesses. This group have been quietly cleaning their neighborhoods and other random areas of town for quite some time. They want to expand the volunteer network to increase the visual, visual attractiveness of Kirkland Lake. They will be holding their first networking breakfast next month. And I urge all interested community members to search for the page Kirkland Lake Beautification Committee on Facebook for more further information. To paraphrase committee members, our residents will no longer tolerate ambivalence to the cleanliness and maintenance of our town. Um, there was a public reading of the proclamation of Elder Abuse Day, June fifteenth. It was uh held on Friday with members of the OPP and Natalie Bute, um, victim support workers. I am wearing an Accountability Now t-shirt today, um, though I never wear t-shirts to council. Um, to support Bill two oh seven Municipal Accountability and Integrity Act twenty twenty four. It was introduced by MPP Jeff Birch, the current status of which is first reading ordered for second reading as per the Legislative Assembly of Ontario. Emily McIntosh founded the Women of Ontario Say No, a nonpartisan advocacy group in twenty twenty two. To lobby the government to hold municipally elected officials accountable if found to be harassing staff or other council members. Currently, the most severe penalty for elected members who are found to harass others regardless of severity or outcome is suspension paid for up to ninety days. Supported by David Arbuckle of the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario and Ontario NDP Leader Merritt Stiles. The bill passed the first reading on the fifth of June, June this year. For our part, this council passed a motion in April of twenty twenty three titled Barriers for Women in Politics. Encouraging action at the provincial level to create legislation to ensure quality, safety and security of women in politics. Though women are disproportionately affected by this issue, the bill advocates for everyone in the municipal workplace. The body of this bill includes provisions to ensure elected members receive annual training. Having to provide a written attestation that they've attended said training. Standardized codes of conduct across the province, provide a range of penalties for contravention of those codes. Standardized processes for inquiries and investigations, provide protection for individuals against reprisals. Among many other stronger requirements. By showing our support, municipal leaders from across the province are requesting legislation. That would hold municipally uh elected members to the very same standard as every other working Ontarioan. If you are found to have egregiously harassed others in your workplace, you should lose your position as an elective official. Just as any other working Ontarioan would. So that is it, Madam Clerk.
Certainly moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Casey Owens, be resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Uh, item number twelve, additional information, there is none. Uh, we will now break for a ten minute recess before moving into post. Okay, we are rising from recess. Madam Clerk.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Longchawa. Be it resolved at council adjournment uh in camera pursuant to section two thirty nine two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. As amended to discuss personal matters about identified individual, including municipal um. Employee, proposed or pending acquisitions or dispositions of land by the municipality. Litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. A position, plan, procedure, criteria or instructive to be applied in negotiations carry on or to be carried on by. Or on behalf of the municipality at six oh nine PM. For the following reason, item thirteen point one, municipal position on land acquisitions and dispositions.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Now rise from in camera. Madam Clerk.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. Be resolved that council reconvene in open session at six forty eight AM.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Matters from closed session, there are none this evening, item number fifteen, confirmation by law.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved that the following by law be read numbered past, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk, and the Seal of the Corporation be affixed there too. By law number twenty four fifty two being a by law to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held Tuesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item number sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dyken, seconded by councillor. Janice Ranger, be resolved that this regular meeting of council do not occur at six forty eight PM.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, good evening, everyone.